Good evening and welcome to the April 12th regular meeting of the City of Arcata's Planning Commission. If any member of the public would like to comment on any item, there are several ways. While on your computer, click the raise your hand icon on the right-hand side of your screen. When the public comment period opens, you'll be unmuted and you'll have three minutes to speak. If you're on your phone, you can also join the meeting and comment by calling the number and meeting ID, all of which are shown at the bottom of the screen. Press star nine to let the clerk know you wish to speak. Again, you'll be unmuted and you'll have three minutes. If you're in attendance, you can approach the podium and make your comment. Again, you'll have three minutes. This meeting is now officially called to order. Director Loia, can we get a real call?
Yeah, thank you. Chair, Mr. St. Elcock?
Here.
Vice Chair Mayor?
Here.
Commissioner Barstow?
Here.
Commissioner Figueroa?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Commissioner Tegney?
Here.
And Commissioner Davies?
I'm here.
Okay, all accounted for.
Thank you. And at the staff's table, we have David Loia, Director of Community Development. Will any other staff be joining us? Nope, you're on your own? Okay. Let's move on to oral communication. This time is provided for members of the public to address the commission or submit written communications on matters not on this evening's agenda. At the conclusion of all oral and written communications, the commission may respond to statements. However, any requests that requires commission actions will be set by the commission for a future agenda or referred to staff. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the commission on something that's not on the agenda? Okay, on to the consent calendar. The only items we have are the March 22nd minutes. Does anyone need to pull that item or can we get a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
We have a first by Barstow.
I'll second that.
Second, my Figueroa. All in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion approved. Tonight's one and only business item is receiving the Gateway Area Plan proposed process and outcome. But before we open this public hearing, do we have any commissioners who have an ex parte communication to disclose?
I've been keeping a list of ex parte communications. Do you want them now or should we just submit our lists?
Go ahead, just say them in public.
Alex Stillman, Tom Wheeler, Yvonne Everett, Jen Calt, Fred Weiss, Mark Andre, Andrea Tuttle, and numerous people at the Co-op, whose names I can't remember.
Thank you. Can we get a staff report, please?
Wait, I have an ex parte.
And also just for the purpose of disclosing ex parte communications, a list of who you spoke with is great, but you should really describe the substantive content of that ex parte so that the rest of the commission has the benefit of the decision-making. And so if you want to summarize briefly?
Yeah, all of these people were concerned about one or more than one aspect of the Gateway Plan or the general plan update.
I attended a meeting with a community group that just have concern about process. There's a letter in here from them that describes exactly what they discussed and I just listened.
And I also spoke to a community member also about process.
All right, thank you. Can we get a staff report when you're ready, David?
All right. Good evening, Chair and Vice Chair and Commissioners. So I think at the last meeting, there was a desire expressed to start having regular meetings on the Gateway Area Plan and the general plan updates. And so did you want to express a little bit of your thinking on that, Chair?
Yes, my idea was to go over it a little bit at every single meeting and just have the public really be able to give a lot of input. And I know it's a 119-page plan, but we really would only need to start down on page 42 where it starts the land use code. I think if we can just go over it section by section in public, let the public give their ideas or their input, and maybe we can actually get through it at some point, maybe even this year, and have a really good community plan. That's my idea. It's up to all of us. So what are your thoughts on that?
I wholly support that idea. Sounds great. Keep it current. I mean, there's no bigger change in Arcata than this right now.
Right. Yeah. Kim, can I get it?
I concur.
Okay.
I have a feeling that if we aren't talking about the Gateway Plan at a meeting, it would need to be because we have a much more pressing matter. And of course, we don't know what those matters are going to be. And it does make sense to have an ongoing conversation about matters that may or may not be on an agenda long in advance with regard to the plan. So yeah, I guess I kind of concur too.
Yeah, I think it's an excellent idea.
Yeah, I'm in support of discussing the plan and the ongoing participation of the community.
Scott, did you want to weigh in on that?
I'm in agreement, just waiting for my turn as I'm not there in public, in person, rather.
Good. Okay, yeah, that is the plan. So we will do that. We'll evaluate the, you know, the starting point and start ticking through the various topics. I think that's a great idea.
Can I just ask then for clarity, does that mean it's going to be an agenda item at every or just?
Yeah, no, we'll bring it forward.
Business matter, but an?
We won't be holding public hearings, notice public hearings on them. They'll be business items.
Business items, okay.
Yep. It's all the nature, the difference between business item and a public hearing on this agenda is really whether or not it's a, you know, formally noticed hearing associated with the actual legislative action that's taking place. So when we go through this public engagement process, the hearings that we're holding here, the, you know, the engagements that we're holding, you know, either through our will come to you meetings or, you know, the events that we're holding, everywhere we're collecting all that information together, all of that will be collated and coalesced into, you know, a document that explains the engagement process that we went through, the recommendations that staff is making as a result of that. And then you'll have formal notice public hearings, and that's when it'll shift over to that other public hearing side. So we don't necessarily need to, you know, provide a legal notice for these kinds of hearings to make sure we get the word out.
Thanks.
Okay. Okay, great. So where, you know, I wanted to start with, you know, with the series of meetings based on the discussion from last time, was at a higher level on some of the key decisions that were made in the past that got us to where we are today. And to explain both to the Planning Commission, the City Council, and the public, you know, what some of these documents are. Terms like form-based code, you know, we've been talking about them for a long time, but, you know, what does that really mean? There were questions about why we're doing an area plan instead of a specific plan. And so there are some sort of higher-order decisions that were made about how we were processing this work by the City Council in conjunction with the Planning Commission in years past. Many public members are questioning those, and so I wanted to start with that grounding. And so that's the topics that we have before you today, really is to compare the differences between specific plan and an area plan, and to talk a little bit about the, you know, the enacting legislation for those and, you know, how they're related and how they're different. We also wanted to present to you a deeper dive on what a form-based code is, sort of the, you know, origins and the history of form-based codes and how they're being used today. And for the most part, you know, I'm not going to go into great detail on those. I provided several links that are in the staff report that have, excuse me, in-depth information on, you know, some good resources for understanding what a form-based code is. If there are questions, we can dig into those in more detail. But I do have a couple of things prepared that I think we can watch together that'll help explain those. And then lastly, to talk just briefly about, you know, this community design concept. I think one of the things that has been confusing for people in the way that this work is being rolled out is that they're looking at the Gateway Area Plan, which is a high-level element of the general plan that outlines the, you know, the vision and the policy level of information, but it doesn't dig into the details. And a lot of people are having questions, well, what about these details? Those details will be baked into the form-based code. And so, you know, I just wanted to have the understanding about the relationship between where these details are, what this form-based code is, and how the community design process integrates with that form-based code so that you have a, you know, sort of an integrated understanding of how these things fit together. So, you know, to start, I guess I'll also mention that you received some email correspondence that we forwarded on, which is not exactly typical of our process. We forwarded that on today. And then in addition, we provided you with some of the correspondence that we've received recently on the Gateway Area Plan in your packet tonight. So one of the things that I'd like to sort of tag on to this conversation, which is related to, you know, the process piece of this, is a concept that Vice Chair Mayor had brought up previously around, you know, how do you get access to these, you know, to these correspondences, you know, emails and that sort of thing. And so I wanted to spend just a little bit of time before we dig into the meat on, you know, on what's in the agenda specifically to talk through this a little bit so that the public understand how correspondence are handled, how they get to the decision-makers, how their voice is being incorporated into the planning process, and where they will see those things show up. And what I'd like to ask the commission is for some guidance on for this particular planning process, where, you know, where you see us going with, you know, with some recommendations around that. Okay, so just zooming back, super high level, when we have an agenda item, let's say it's a planning permit, you know, the typical course of action is that we bring all of that information to the Planning Commission in the packet. It's included in attachment. You have, you know, some people have written for the project, some people have written, you know, opposed to the project. And that's how you typically receive all of the information around the decision that you're making. All of it comes out in these, you know, in this chamber, and it's all assessed by everyone through the staff report. We bring it through as an attachment. That's typically the way that we've tried to structure this. We've generally discouraged Planning Commissioners in particular from engaging with the public in ways that create ex parte communications, that create this understanding of the project that happens outside of the public hearing because it's more difficult to bring into the hearing the specifics around what you learned so that the person who's coming forward asking for the permit, who has quasi-judicial due process afforded to them, the ability to confront that information, present, you know, evidence to the contrary. And so that's typically the kinds of decisions that the Planning Commission is involved in, is these quasi-judicial decisions where it's really important for all of the evidence to be presented in this forum. Now, the City Council operates typically at the policy level or at the legislative level, which is a little bit different in the way that communications are handled. Even still, when the Planning Commission has been a recommending body on a legislative decision, the Planning Commission makes final decisions on quasi-judicial matters, but it does not take final action on legislative actions. Things that change the code, change the policy, you know, have new zone types or that sort of thing. And so typically, when the Planning Commission is, you know, holding a hearing to make a recommendation to the decision-making body, again, we've discouraged ex parte communications because typically those are, you know, short-term public hearings that you can then have all of the evidence come out in the public hearing, present that to the City Council separately for their review. This is a unique process. This is a very long-term process. It's been ongoing for the last five years and will continue on for at least the next year. And so it's a little, and it's a much larger process. There's a lot more moving parts. There's a lot more decisions to be made. And the public is wanting to have more access to the decisions, rather to the decision-makers. And so what has happened is that we've been using our standard operating procedure, standard practice for collecting public comment. And when somebody says, you know, dear Commissioners, you know, this is how I feel about this, I think you should do this, that, and the other, we're putting that into a file, and we were prepared to bring that forward as a correspondence under an agenda item on the topic, as we typically do. But recently, someone who had submitted comment, public comment, went, you know, kind of circled back, and they're like, what happened to my public comment? I wanted that to go to the Planning Commission, or I wanted that to go to the City Council. And so we realized that, you know, from the outside perspective, they're thinking, hey, I send the email, it's immediately getting transferred to the decision-makers. So that they're, you know, reading my correspondence as I'm writing it essentially. It's just not the way that the system has been designed historically. And so, you know, at the same time, we want to recognize that there is a, you know, strong desire to have a continuing conversation, not a periodic conversation. You know, that continuing conversation largely being information flow, one direction where you would receive that correspondence. And I think part of our conversation needs to be around how, as you receive those correspondences, we get that back into the record so that everyone has access to it. There's a deeper nuance to this. I had a conversation with a public member recently who was questioning why all of the correspondences that he and I have had back and forth around the Gateway Area Plan weren't included in the packet tonight. You know, they see some, but not all of the correspondences, is what they're saying. And the reason for that, and as I reviewed the packet, I didn't actually put this attachment together, but as I reviewed this packet, I realized that this is, you know, got a hodgepodge of different kinds of communications. But typically, we don't enter into the public record a correspondence that someone sends us if they're talking directly to us and asking us questions and we're having a back and forth. We enter into the public record correspondences where it's clear that they intend those to end up in the public record. In fact, staff, not my staff, but our, you know, city staff have gotten in trouble before going through a public process, including all the emails that they received into a packet, and had someone say, why did you put my email in the packet? I didn't know that was going to be in public. And so trying to have this conversation where we develop a real clear understanding of what happens with these correspondences, I think is, you know, it's timely and it's important so that everyone understands how those are being treated. So the couple of options that, you know, that I think are on the table here, one is that we can continue to, as the staff level, the way that it's set up right now is that we receive correspondence. We bring those correspondences to the Planning Commission, you know, and we can do it one of two ways. If we send them directly as we receive them, we will then compile them into a staff report so that they're collected and there's out there for everyone to review and understand. The other way would be to sort of stick to the typical process, which is where we don't forward them automatically. We just bring them into a packet, agenda package, and then they're disclosed to everyone at the same time. And then sort of the third option, which I believe, you know, we've heard from some commissioners to date is, well, hey, why don't we have city emails? Why can't we get correspondence directly? And, you know, people are getting my personal email, they're sending me correspondences that are associated with the city through this personal email. And so we can have a combination of a couple of these different things. But I wanted to, before we dig into the other elements of the plan, I wanted to start with that, just so that, you know, we can set the ground rules and have a clear understanding and something that we can communicate to the public, this is how your correspondence is treated.
Okay, so you're asking us what we would prefer. Do we receive public comment? Would we prefer? Would we prefer you sending, forwarding to us immediately as soon as you get it? Or would you prefer, would we prefer having it all come together in our package? Or would we prefer getting our own email addresses? And, see, that seems like a lot of work, because then we're going to have to share it all with each other.
It's a lot of work, but, but again, I mean, it's part, I think that, you know, the, I'm sorry, was it?
I just.
Okay. But I think it's, we have to manage the majority, it's not that much more work. We have to manage the majority of that workload anyway to ensure that we're collecting and collating the information and then bringing it forward. So there's kind of two decision trees. One is, does the Commission wish to have city-issued email addresses that you're then receiving correspondence directly through those email addresses? We've never had them before, some cities do, some cities don't.
That sounds really difficult for us to know what then we share with each other, because otherwise we're just receiving a thread from one group. It sounds crazy or impossible, in terms of ex parte kind of stuff.
I've been receiving emails recently, in the past few weeks, to my personal email, which is not published, and to my university email, which I choose not to use for Planning Commission business. And some of these have been from people who said, I have no idea how to get in touch with you. And so other people have been buttonholing me in public at the co-op and wanting to, you know, explain things that they couldn't reach me about otherwise. I would very much appreciate a city email that has the advantage that whatever communication goes to that email could easily go on record if necessary. But I don't feel that emails that are asking questions or addressed to one member of the Commission need to be shared with everyone else. However, it would also provide a way for the city to immediately forward to us mail from any member of the public that is explicitly addressed to Commission members in a timely way without having to wait two months until it appears with an agendized item in a packet. So I would really appreciate having a city email and to have a list of Planning Commission emails published so that the public knows how to reach people.
Would our emails, our city emails be interfaced through the Planning Commission webpage? And I think it would be useful in the sense for potential public record requests in the future, likely, which will probably likely occur, and it'd avoid us, you know, from having to dig into our personal emails and so forth. So I'd prefer a city email.
Yeah, no, those are good points, and I think that those are, you know, I don't know exactly what the logistics would be, but it makes sense that they would be on the Planning Commission webpage. We'd have to, you know, figure those out.
So, catch me up here. If I'm receiving emails or corresponding back and forth with either an individual, a builder, a group, and then I come to planning, then I have to disclose all that if I haven't already forwarded it to the entire group or, you know, some, it just sounds confusing, like there's going to be layers and layers of ex parte stuff that we're going to have to share each time we come to a meeting, if this is an active situation.
It would definitely change the nature of ex parte events for the Planning Commission, making them a lot more accessible. I mean, I think to Vice Chair Mayor's point, you all live in the community, you shop in the community, you play in the community, and community members will bump into you and give you ex parte anyway. Certainly would open, you know, more access to that ex parte. And we'd have to, again, develop, you know, a process and procedures. Some emails, you know, that are just questions or comments back and forth that aren't really germane to a public comment on any particular item, you know, wouldn't necessarily be, you know, need to be brought into the public record. But certainly, you know, if someone's presenting you ideas and evidence and, you know, thoughts or ideas on any, you know, planning permit or, you know, legislative process like this, then you would want to bring that into the public record by forwarding it to me, and then I would put it into the packet.
Is it not easier for that same communication to just go to the whole group and be put in the packet like we've been doing?
Typically, we have not sent communications outside of the, you know, the Planning Commission meeting materials. There are some rare occasions where we'll send something informational to the Planning Commission as a whole. Or, you know, recently, we've been forwarding, you know, correspondence, especially on this item because of, you know, sort of a shift in policy. And so we just wanted to have the conversation with the Planning Commission and set a course and start, you know, operating in that fashion, and then be able to communicate that to the public, that this is how we're treating your correspondence.
Commissioner Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. I was reading through the 150 pages of correspondence that you had forwarded us for this week's packet, including some letters that had been addressed to the Commission as much as two months ago and which we are just now receiving. And one of the things that really struck me about that is I don't feel that I need to receive copies of queries from the public addressed directly to staff, which staff then responds to, and that's in the course of normal business as you communicate with the public. I feel strongly, though, that I would like to receive correspondence addressed to members of the Planning Commission in a timely way. And it seems that if we're requesting that members of the public, by preference, go through staff in order to reach us, which right now they sort of have to do because they have no way of getting our own addresses, that we not wait to forward those communications until that item happens to be on the agenda and risk that we receive communications two months later. And I would love for all of my Planning Commission communication, including the digital versions of the agenda and the packets, to go to a Planning Commission address rather than somehow get buried in the midst of all of my other emails. There, I'll know where to go check for them, I'll have a complete record of all of those things, the city will have a complete record of all of those things. And if there should be a public records request, it's super easy to know where they all are and to provide them. There's no way I'm going to go through, in this case, 16 years of personal emails to dig out communications with regard to a Planning Commission issue. So.
Yeah, no, I hear you. I think that's why we're having this conversation, is to, you know, kind of set a policy down. You know, clearly, the, you know, the expectation that someone who sent an email two months ago, you know, from their perspective, they clearly had the expectation that you would have received it by now. And it's only our, you know, standard operating procedure, if you will, our standard practice that would have led to, you know, the conversation we're having now. Another alternative is for Planning Commissioners to establish, you know, third-party email accounts that are specific for, you know, Planning Commission business, and that would avoid, you know, intermixing, you know, your personal and/or work emails with Planning Commission emails. It still doesn't resolve some of the concerns about how we get these ideas back into the record, or, you know, how searchable they are, but that is another alternative.
So I don't want to spend too much time on this, we have a lot of people here, but I'm really torn now because I'm worried about transparency. So if we all have our own email addresses to the city, what if, but we're not sharing it? So at least when things, the public sends something to you, you share it with all of us, but am I going to have to, I'm not going to remember to share everything. I'm just worried about the transparency issue. But then, and two, if we have a FOIA request, are we, are we going to have to provide it? Are you guys going to, if it's a city address, can't you guys get in there and do all the work? Because we all have lives, you know?
Yeah, no, if there's a Public Records Act request, we would, and you had a city email, we would pull those emails that are germane to that topic, and so that it would have that benefit. It does not address the, you know, the concern that Commissioner Tagney raised about, you know, or that I think I'm hearing you raise about, if you receive an email there and you forget to, you know, include that in the record, you know, that's just sort of one of the hazards, I guess you could say, of taking that approach. And so there's, you know, costs and benefits of doing it that way. On the one hand, if you have, you know, direct emails that folks can reach you at, then, you know, you're more accessible to the public, which I think gives a sense to the public that they have, you know, better access, which is good. But if those, if we're not diligent and those correspondences don't, you know, ultimately make it back into the record, then we have less transparency, and that's bad. So it's, you know, a little bit of a balancing act, and I think we can probably structure it such that, generally speaking, you know, we can have emails that are sent through, you know, like a form to all Planning Commissioners, can also be sent to staff so that we can make sure and include that in the record if it's germane. And I, you know, to your point, Vice Chair Mayor, I do think that the intent was not to include just correspondence between staff and the public. I see that there are a couple of those in here. There are a couple of other issues with this packet. We kind of put it together last minute as this was coming together rather quickly with people saying, hey, we're not seeing the, you know, correspondence, what's going on. And so we tried to do our best to get some, you know, information into the record for you.
Is this something we can percolate on now?
It is, absolutely.
I have a suggestion. There's project management software.
Sorry, can you step to the mic? Do you want to take public comment, or?
If it's a good idea.
Just a recommendation, there's project management software that you guys can use, and the easiest form would be like, like Google Docs would be an easy, easy way for you guys to like, transfer that, those email back and forth. But that's like the most simplest form of doing that, so.
Yeah, I would like to mention too, there's, you know, Microsoft Teams, all that sorts of stuff. So, you know, this is the pretty typical way we operate in the public forum, is essentially using Microsoft Teams, or, you know, Google Docs, or some to that effect as well. So I think, just in reference to the concerns, you know, I think creating an email where in which it's on the Planning Commission's interface, you know, it also removes, it eliminates the issues in which, you know, things are lost in translation in regards of, you know, having a conversation in the co-op or wherever. You know, you can just reference individuals from the community to just look up your email, write me an email, and then we can discuss from there, rather than having conversations in public. So then everything is clearly documented. That's a suggestion.
That was our IT guy that just came out and told me that he's threatening me after this conversation. No, I'm joking. That really was our IT guy, and I will have to say that before we get too far ahead of ourselves in, you know, planning how this could roll out, you know, he's certainly going to need to weigh in on, you know, what our capacities are, and there's a lot of security issues and all those kinds of things. So let's get the, let's get the high level, like, yes, we want to do this, no, we don't want to do this, as a decision point, and then we'll let him craft the solution for us, and we'll roll that out if that's the choice.
Okay, I have a high level. If I have to interface with one more piece of software that I need to learn in order to serve on the Planning Commission, that may be the end of it. So if you want to get rid of me here, make me learn a new piece of software. Incidentally, I do use all of that software, and I appreciate it a lot. But I think that the need to be easily disclosed and to have full public access means we keep things simple and under the city's handle rather than under the handle of a commercial product.
Before we move on, can I just check in with Scott and see if he has anything to add?
Scott, are you there? Do you have any comments regarding this issue?
I understand the reason for getting emails through the Planning Commission website, and if that's the group decision, I'll go that way, although I'm a little hesitant to add yet another email chain to my email, existing email world. But I see the wisdom there, and I'll follow the group decision.
So we're going to move on from that, and we're going to percolate, we're going to revisit it.
Okay, great. So next, I just wanted to touch on, again, high level, the concepts of area plan versus a specific plan. And, you know, this has been a question, I think, you know, the public can certainly speak to it in more detail in terms of, you know, what their concerns are. But in general, what I think is motivating this conversation is the idea that there are concerns around, you know, how we're going to pay for the infrastructure, what exactly the infrastructure is that we'll need, and, you know, questions around, you know, how, you know, how possible is some of this. So, you know, they're, you know, these are all valid questions, they're all concerns that we need to, you know, work through over the course of the, you know, the time that we're working on these documents and address to the extent that we can. One of the big differences between a specific plan and an area plan is the combined planning document and zoning document. So a specific plan is basically both a master plan and an implementation zoning tool. So that's one, one big difference, whereas an area plan can be, you know, a standalone element of the general plan or standalone document that's not even incorporated into the general plan. It can be a little bit more fluid around, you know, how it's used. It's not defined in government code in the way that a specific plan is. The other major component is that a specific plan has a capital improvement program associated with it. And that capital improvement program lines out, you know, all of the improvements, the infrastructure and other, you know, programs that would be associated with the specific plan, an estimate on their dollar figure, and identifying what their, you know, what those sources are going to be, how you're going to pay for that infrastructure. On the face of it, that all sounds good. The more, you know, assurance that we can get upfront as to the, you know, how these documents are going to work, the better. One of the major driving forces behind this effort, when we started it about five years ago, was to bring some assurance to both the community, the development community, and city decision-makers around the kinds of, you know, outcomes that we were going to see from the planning process. And so we're definitely going for, you know, more assurance than less with this effort. The challenge that we, that we face implementing a capital improvement program on a 20-year plan is that, you know, we know that things are going to change. The challenge with implementing it, and there are certainly specific plans that have areas as large as, or larger than the Gateway Area. Gateway Area is, you know, 138-plus acres. It's probably on the, on the medium side, the lower-medium side of specific plans that I'm familiar with. And so it's not that the area is too large. I would say, though, that specific plans can be very targeted to, say, one specific type of thing. So maybe the specific plan is really all about bringing, let's say, light rail infrastructure into a community. And so your specific plan covers a much larger area, but it's got a much smaller scope than what this Gateway Area Plan proposes, in which case you can have a, you know, a huge specific plan area with very limited objectives and a very targeted capital improvement program associated with that. You know, on the other end of the spectrum, you could have something, you know, that is fairly detailed, and the pieces of infrastructure that you're identifying as improvements associated with that are still very limited. associated with that are still very limited in terms of their scope. The infrastructure that's identified in the gateway area plan is, is on the, on par with a, you know, a general plan ambition. It's a, it's a very large visionary goal to have, you know, those elements implemented, all of those streetscapes, for example. You know, those aren't going to be, you know, a single project where we come in and we've got a capital improvement program that's going to do, you know, block A, block B, block C, one year after the other on a regular, regular basis until we're complete. We have to identify the funds, ensure that the projects that are coming through justify the, you know, the adoption. It'll probably be a, you know, you know, we'll have stepping stones, milestones along the way where we implement bits of the infrastructure based on trigger points that we've identified, that once we've developed to a certain level, we implement this phase of it, and so on and so forth. And so, you know, to, to my way of thinking about this, if we, if we went for a specific plan, we would really have to focus in on what specifically the, the infrastructure is that we want to include in that capital improvement program. We should not go into a specific plan thinking that, you know, that everything that's mapped out in that gateway area plan is going to have a line item in the capital improvement program. It's just too big, too many uncertainties, it's more visionary than necessarily practical. Now, there are some elements of the infrastructure that we absolutely have to have nailed before we adopt this plan. One of them is wastewater, for example. And so we need to know if we're, before we adopt the gateway area plan, before we adopt the general plan updates, it's going to project a new growth projection, we need to ensure that the, you know, that we have either the capacity now in the treatment plant that we have available to us, or that we've identified the steps that we will take in order to ensure that we have the appropriate amount of wastewater treatment to manage that population. And so there are going to be outcomes from this planning process where we know real specifically through the environmental impact report work that we're doing, we're going to identify water and wastewater, what specifically needs to be done to ensure, not only for the gateway area, but for the city at large, because there's going to be development and growth all throughout the city, what those improvements are. We're not going to have an outcome of a capital improvement program, because again, if, if we set the trigger point, let's say, for the next piece of infrastructure for wastewater treatment at 22,000 population, and we never get to 22,000 population, then we're not identifying, you know, a capital improvement program for that. We can have a trigger point that says, once we get to, you know, 21,000, then, you know, you need to include it in the capital improvement program and secure the funds, for example. And then ultimately, with, with at least wastewater treatment, the reality is, is that if you get to a point and you're exceeding your capacity for your plant, then you have to, you have to, you know, basically adopt a moratorium. If your plant can take no more capacity, you can't have more build-out. And so those, you know, we, we set a plan, but we're also verifying the plan along the way with, you know, periodic assessments of that infrastructure. And that would be true for all of the infrastructure. So for right now, for example, in the, in the plan, there's a one-way couplet, one-way northbound on K Street, one-way southbound on L Street. The very northern end of L Street, the city doesn't own the connection between Alliance or K and L Street. We would have to acquire, you know, some land in order to, to carry out this vision. On the very south end, the, you know, last couple of blocks from Seventh Street South to Samoa is all in the Great Redwood Trails Authority, Great Trails Authority, I can't remember the name of it, but the former railroad authority. And so we, we don't have a clear path on how we're going to acquire that. And so, so baking in a capital improvement program for, you know, some of these, you know, larger aspirational, ambitious, you know, we're going to slowly plod towards working those out, doesn't make a lot of sense at this point. We recognize this, we had the discussion about this before we released the RFP for, you know, for the, the planning work, to actually start drafting the documents. So again, you know, dating back to 2017, we started talking about a housing-specific plan. We had that on our, you know, those of you who have been on the, the planning commission since that time, or at that time recall that we've had that on the, the annual study sessions with the city council every year since that time, that we've talked about the housing, housing strategic plan, which evolved into the strategic infill redevelopment plan, which encompassed some of these higher goals, broader goals of adopting the expanded or the updated general plan. And so, you know, that, that evolution along the way, we've, we've called it a lot of different things, but before the decision was made to release the RFP for, for this planning work, we sat down and evaluated, you know, specific plan versus area plan, and landed on area plan. It's going to come in at a lower cost, and it's going to give us the flexibility to, to implement it as it's needed, and still have the, the relevant environmental work that we've done, that, that supports the development that's envisioned in that plan. So I just wanted to pause there. There may be, you may, depending on how you want to handle this, you may want to take each section with, with, you know, deliberations.
Each section? Is that then your report, David?
I'm wondering if we have questions about the staff report up to this point.
Okay, yeah. Do we have any questions for staff? Sounds like-
I don't, no, sorry.
I just had a quick question. Were we going to move forward on a study session as Sarah had recommended at city council?
Yeah, we're still trying to figure out the logistics for that.
Any questions?
I just feel like that might help guide the process.
It is, so certainly the, the decision, you know, whether to shift gears again and not do an area plan, but shift back to a specific plan, you know, that's a council decision. You know, there's budget associated with that, there's a, you know, it's a policy matter, you know, changing the prior council's decision on that is, is another policy matter. Certainly, the planning commission, you know, should weigh in on that, that decision. In part, you know, I'm anticipating that the city council will be, you know, watching this, this meeting tonight to get some of this same information, because I know they're all very interested as well. And then there are several steps, engagement steps left, and we'll talk more about those as we get into the rest of the staff report, that will lead up to, you know, a more refined and detailed, detailed understanding of what's going to be, what's in the proposed plan as it's currently drafted, or as it's, as it's currently conceived. And ultimately, yes, a joint study session is part of that engagement, so that the planning commission, city council can, can speak directly to one another.
Does, does anyone have any questions for David up to this point? Scott, what about you? Did you have any questions at this point? Do you want David to continue?
I'm fine with David continuing, thank you.
Okay, I think, go ahead.
If you're looking for feedback, your explanation was clear, and as, I think that your light rail scenario was a good one, because that is a very specific project that's just a one-time construction. Well, what we're talking about here is 20 years' worth of development, potentially. Who knows? And how could we possibly come up with engineering and all the specs about utilities and everything else, not knowing which projects are actually going to get built when? It feels like trying to create a specific plan would be squeezing all of that information into a lot of unknowns, because they're just somewhere out in the future, and by the time we get to building them, it will all have changed. Prices will have changed, materials will have changed, and-
Could I just ask a quick question? Isn't a specific plan a living document, and that's the whole point, is that you can change as you're going along? Or am I confused?
Well, I mean, I guess technically, they're all living documents. I mean, the point of creating a plan is to have some certainty around, you know, the decision-making process. Both specific plans and area plans are intended to provide a master planning, you know, process that the community and the decision-makers, you know, understand, you know, what the outcomes will be in the future. You know, clearly, if the, you know, if the, the conditions change and there's a need to change a community plan or a specific plan, future decision-makers can, can make the decision to do that. So I, I would say that they, you know, both have the feature that, yeah, they're living documents. You certainly don't want to, you know, change them regularly. You're going through, you know, a pretty intensive planning process to, to create some, some certainty around, you know, the built environment. But I'd say that they are both, you know, both can be viewed as living documents. I mean, you know, all of, all of our planning documents are. We can change them when we find that they're not accomplishing the objectives that we thought they were going to accomplish.
Okay, so I, I'm going to wait until the end, and I'm going to let everybody from the public come up and, and talk, because I'm just going to wait till the end. But I have a couple of questions. So your, staff is recommending a medievalized area plan category. So what about, what's a transit-oriented, oriented development plan? Is that under that, or how come we're not going in that direction? Because that's really what we want, right?
I'm sorry, what was the, what was the plan name?
Transit-oriented plan?
Transit-oriented plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Transit, they're not mutually exclusive. The transit-oriented development is, you know, kind of a term that's been developed around trying to reduce vehicle miles traveled and concentrating development in areas of high transit. For our area, it really sort of falls apart, because we don't have a high transit service area anywhere. We may in the future, and I'd love to see a future state where we do, and I think that we're borrowing similar concepts of transit-oriented development with the kind of infill development that we're proposing.
And so, an area plan will give developers discretionary entitlements?
Yeah, actually, and I can address that a little bit in the Form-Based Code too, in the transition. Before we leave the, the area plan versus specific plan, I did want to address Commissioner Tagney, the statement that you made, because it is possible to say, we want to make sure that, you know, you know, you know, L Street and K Street are, are developed the way that we've designed them in this plan. So we're going to develop a specific plan, but the only infrastructure that we're going to include in this, even though there's all this aspirational, you know, visionary planning in this document, that is, you know, something we'll need in the future to accomplish this plan, the only pieces that we're going to include are maybe, let's say, water, wastewater, and K and L. And we're going to have a capital improvement program for those, we're going to identify where we think we're going to get the money from, we're going to steadily chip away at those. If we end up, you know, not building those in time, then there are also implications for the projects that we'd envisioned. And so, you know, I look at our experience with the Foster Avenue extension, where it was envisioned in 2000, and it was built, you know, in 2018. It took that long for that vision to come to fruition, for the city to acquire the property, to, you know, go through the environmental work, to go through the, the engineering work, secure the money to do it, and actually build it out. And the, the development that you see along Foster, you know, the trail, the, you know, the housing development, the, the open-door clinic, none of that would have been possible without building the road first. And so, you know, it, there's, there's a clear connection between, you know, building the infrastructure and, you know, and the, you know, the other built environment, the private side-built environment that comes along with it. So I just, I didn't want us to leave with the impression that, you know, we can't do a specific plan. It'll certainly be more expensive, it'll be more limiting, but it would give us the assurance on, you know, whatever pieces of infrastructure we chose to include in it. The decision to go with the area plan gave us greater flexibility to accomplish these goals.
I think we're ready to hear the rest of that.
Okay, so, yeah, Form-Based Code. I've got, I'm going to do less talking, I've got a couple of videos for you to watch that, you know, will help to explain the Form-Based Code. But I do want to just emphasize one quick thing before we do that. And that, that is that, you know, we've been using the terms Form-Based Code or Community Design sort of interchangeably. I just wanted to point back to, you know, again, many of you were on the commission when the, the village project was being reviewed as a discretionary decision to change the zoning and approve this, you know, four-story buildings out on the Craftsman's Farm. One of the key things that we heard through that process was, you know, I only get three minutes at the mic at a time. I want to have the ability to, as a community member, to get in there and help the developer design them. In order for the developer, though, to have a hearing, we require that they have very specific plans that show that their project meets our code. So they have to invest the money upfront to, you know, build out a set of near-engineered plans, you know, at least 30% design plans that meet the code. And then, when they come to a discretionary hearing, again, they're in that quasi-judicial process, they are allowed due process. And though there's no explicit, you know, requirement for a speedy process, I think that is what's expected, is that you're either going to vote me up or down, or give me some conditions to modify the plan, it meets the code, and, and so approve it. So that doesn't feel great to the community members, who feel like, hey, I wanted to have a better hand in, in helping to say what this is going to look like, I don't like the look of that building, but the commission is sitting here saying, well, it meets the design criteria, so, you know, we, we're feeling fairly limited in our, our ability to, to modify this. So we leverage that, that experience and realize that with this planning process, we have an opportunity to really get engaged with the public, try and find out what elements, you know, do they want to see in, in the future of Arcata, and have them participate in designing out the code. We haven't gotten there yet, that's still forthcoming. And so the Form-Based Code will reflect, you know, the, the design, you know, you know, biases, I guess I'll say, you know, the design, you know, criteria that we as a community can sit down together and understand what our future building is going to look like. Okay, so I've got a couple of, a couple of things here. This one's really short. It speaks for itself, and I'm sorry, I can't expand it, because the, it's too grainy.
Form-Based Code has been described as DNA-type communication. They do this by helping cities create neighborhoods and businesses that are vibrant, walkable, and bicycle and transit-friendly, all while preserving their community.
Yep, give me a second. That's 100%.
They do this by significant, well, separation.
Get some tech help here.
I didn't know you were showing videos tonight, sorry.
Sorry.
You can show it off your laptop on Zoom, and I can bring it up from the Zoom window, because I don't have the audio hooked up for that computer.
Okay, gotcha. This is going to be, this is like a 10-minute video at the most. We're going to pull it up through the Zoom window. We're gonna pull it up through the Zoom window.
For anyone who does want to see it, the URL is gonna be up on the recording of this session, so people can watch it themselves.
All right, yeah, I will, I'll put those out.
It's in the link in the agenda for those of you at home who are curious.
I'm sorry, one second.
Page eight on the agenda, there's a link.
Yeah.
People at home can watch if they're curious.
I don't think this one is on there, but that's okay. It is quite all right. If you Google, or if you YouTube Form-Based Code, you can watch a Form-Based Code 101 from, on, on the YouTube. Okay, so, moving on then, I, I think that the main points of the Form-Based Code that I want you to get a, a sense for out of the videos, and I guess I'll, I'll just ask for maybe a show of hands, how many folks had an opportunity to look at some of the resources that were in there? Okay, great. You know, the main, main thing I wanted to bring up, Scott's raising his hand as well. Main thing I wanted to bring up is, you know, the concept that the Form-Based Code is really, you know, de-emphasizes segregation of uses and emphasizes the, the entire public realm. And so it takes into consideration everything from the streetscape and how that integrates into the, into the, the private realm, into the buildings that are built on, you know, individuals' project sites. The difference between the code that we have today and what a Form-Based Code could do, for example, is that the code we have today has a specific set of standards that applies to every parcel within a given zone. And so if you're in the commercial central, for example, you're allowed to build right up on the street frontage, on the back of sidewalk, four stories tall. You can go up to 45 feet without having any kind of variances or anything like that. And that applies regardless of whether or not you have, you know, 50-foot-wide parcel or an entire city block. Those, the buildings that result from those different-sized parcels with the exact same standards are very different, and we don't have a regulatory authority necessarily to, to limit someone based on what's allowed for in the code. And then, in addition, the, 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 the interaction, the intersection between individual parcels and other already developed parcels is less well-understood with, with sort of a blanket standard applied. Form-Based Code will allow us to, you know, go into a lot more detail about how, you know, how buildings can intersect and interact with one another, how they intersect with the public sphere. And so, for example, right now, the, they're, you know, the Beryl District, the draft plan suggests that there's an allowance for eight-story buildings. The Form-Based Code would further refine that allowance and prohibit that eight-story buildings be, you know, either, you know, no more than, you know, X, or that they would have to be separated by a certain distance, or, and that they couldn't be, you know, close to other buildings, you know, closer than certain distance from other buildings, to try and ameliorate some of the impacts associated with, you know, with those taller statured buildings. The Form-Based Code can be very site-specific in addressing how those buildings interact with one another in ways that, you know, your traditional Euclidean zoning can't. And so, so, so even though, right now, in the downtown, for example, and in the central commercial surrounding it, every parcel is allowed to have a four-story building on it, based on the, the zoning ordinance that we have today. In the Form-Based Code, we would evaluate, where is it appropriate to have four-story buildings? How big is the setback need to be to ameliorate those impacts? Where is it appropriate to have a five- or six-story building, et cetera? I will say that, you know, we've taken enough public comment at this point that I can say with confidence that staff is going to, you know, make a recommendation to the city council to reduce the number of floors that are, that are allowed, or at least to consider doing that. Clearly, there's a connection between the financial feasibility and the density of the building. Once you've paid for the parcel, you know, there's a, a cost savings in each floor that you put on top of that parcel that's, that's already buried in the parcel cost. Clearly, there's a, you know, there are some breakpoints in, in the cost of construction, but we'll leave that to the, you know, to the private developers to figure out which, you know, where the breakpoint is for them. But if we reduce the building footprint too low, if we don't allow for a high enough density, then, you know, some of the other amenities that we want to get out of the plan likely won't be cost feasible. And so there's a, a conversation that we need to have around, you know, what we're getting out of the, the amenities, the amenity program, and what we're getting out of the, you know, the, the density. But, you know, we've, we've done enough engagement at this point that I think, you know, there are very few folks out there that are saying we haven't gone tall enough, or that that's, that eight stories is, is the perfect height, that that's where we need to stick to our guns. But the vast majority of people, including many of the architects that we've engaged with in the area, say that six stories is really the tallest that you want to go in this area. And even at six stories, I wouldn't see that happening on, on every single parcel. So the Form-Based Code gives us a lot more nuanced approach to what the built environment will look like. It turns over a little bit of the, the decision-making around mixed uses to the, to the, the land owner. If they feel like they can provide for, you know, a light industrial space on the ground floor and residential on top, then, you know, that's, that's more power to them. And so it has, it's lighter on the, on the codes. And then, just finally, to address, Julie, the, the comment that you had made, because there are some people who are saying, hey, look, you know, I don't want to lose the discretionary review process. I guess what I would say to that is, you know, discretionary review, you put an application in, you get a public hearing that's noticed, the public come out, they, they comment on your project. And that's the process we have right now. That's the process that people feel frustrated by right now, in large extent, in terms of, you know, their ability to change the way that projects look and so on and so forth. So we can certainly, you know, stick with that program. The reason why we're doing what we're doing now is from lessons learned over the past 10 or 15 years, the conversations that the Planning Commission, the City Council have had around those lessons learned, and the guidance that we've, you know, been given from those discussions, to develop a plan that allows us to identify in advance what our community is going to look like, and then make it really straightforward for people who want to come to our community and provide that. Again, I'll point to the Village project as an object lesson. You could love the Village project, you can hate the Village project, but just looking at it as an object lesson, they spent hundreds of thousands of dollars redesigning that project at least seven times. They went through 17 public hearings to get to a point where their project was so watered down that the major funding backer to the project backed out, said, I'm done with this project. So if we have a public review process that, that relies on that sort of public engagement on a project-by-project basis, we are not gonna have development in this community. People are gonna be so averse to coming to this community and going through that process, the holding cost, the risk is so, so high that we're just not gonna get any takers. You'll recall, one of the early discussions that we had around this, this, this concept that's ultimately evolved into a Form-Based Code that the community designs, that we then make it simplified for, for developers to build by, was around this time-money-certainty triangle. You all remember that from the early proposals, where, you know, regulation typically increases time's uncertainty and, and the cost, and most developers are willing to pay upfront. They're willing to pay to get a streamlined process to give us what we feel like we need. Many developers say, hey, you tell me, tell me what you want me to build, tell me what you want it to look like. And then we say, well, I can't design your project for you, that's up to you and your architects. So they design it with their, them and their architects, they think it meets our code, they bring it to us, and then, you know, they go through a public process, maybe 17 meetings long. That process, again, is an object lesson, where they spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on paper that they submitted to us time and time again, on meetings like these meetings, didn't result in any impact in our community. It didn't result in increased taxes, it didn't result in increased safe housing for students, it didn't result in the trail we thought we were gonna get out of it. None of the amenities that would have come associated with that project were, were invested in this community. All of that money was invested into, you know, an account, an architecture firm outside of the community. The way that the process is designed here, it would allow us to extend beyond the typical conditions of approval and ask for community amenities. And so instead of investing hundreds of thousands of dollars into a process, we can ask them to invest some of that money into our community. That's the conversation that we had that led us up to the process that we're leading to right now. Certainly, we can, we can add, you know, elements to it that would involve, you know, some public participation. I would caution the decision-makers from going too far in that direction, responding to, you know, the fear now that we don't know what someone will bring to the community, recognizing we're gonna go through a community design process, number one, and number two, recognizing that we, by, by investing in a new process after we've gone through this process, doesn't create that certainty. And so, it's okay to say we don't want to create the certainty, it's just that if that's the decision, then we should stop doing this and just do something else that says, that goes back to a more traditional model. We can still go mixed use, we can still say we want high density, we can still say that we want, you know, you know, maximum of X stories. We can even go through a process and do a little bit of design work so that we know, you know, generally what we'd like to see that goes into a little bit more depth of the design work we have now. But what I would caution against is going the next step and saying, and then we're gonna have discretionary review of these projects. If we're gonna develop a streamlined process, if we're gonna go through a community design now, if we're gonna put all the money and time and energy that it takes to create this really robust vision for the future that we can all understand, we may not all agree. I, I don't want anybody to, to walk away from here thinking that we're all going to agree, but we'll all understand what the future could look like. If we're gonna put that investment in now, then we need to include a significant streamlining component to it that allows those developers to actually bring to us what we've asked for.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. So, I just want to make it clear, so you're talking about the six, eight stories, whatever. None of that's written in stone, right? That's what we're doing here, and then we're gonna present it to the council, and they can do whatever they want, because we elected them to do whatever they want. So, I, I agree, yeah, it's, we'll say, we, we do need to tell developers what we want, and then we need to make it easy for them to do it. That's, that's our goal here. That makes such perfect sense, anybody could understand that. So, shall we open up to the public, or do we have? Go ahead.
Hi, thank you very much for your explanation. I would just like to add, or counter a little bit, that Form-Based Codes are not mutually exclusive from discretionary review. And in fact, the exemplary Form-Based Codes that you suggested we read, and I've, I've actually been teaching about one of those for a while in a university course, both have extensive discretionary review involved, as well as some aspects that can be ministerially approved based on standards in the Form-Based Code by a development director or a zoning code administrator. But I think the way that you're presenting this as it's either/or is actually quite misleading. And in the examples that you put before us, those particular examples actually counter this sense of these two options being mutually exclusive at opposite ends of a decision-making process. I, I think that Arcata can develop a robust Form-Based Code through a community process that also still has a place for the Planning Commission and the City Council to have discretion over certain aspects of approval, especially for the largest projects, new types of projects, and projects with really unique characteristics. And I would appreciate going forward with that in mind, rather than with the idea that discretionary review is, is somehow anathema to adopting a progressive and robust and participatory Form-Based Code. These things are not mutually exclusive, and I, I think there are many of us here who are not really willing to give up some discretionary review in order to serve the, the speedy decision-making needs of major developers, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry if you understood me to say that they're mutually exclusive. I believe I specifically said that I wouldn't go too far in that direction, and that I think that there is a way to incorporate some public review. So I, I wouldn't say that I was being misleading, I think I, I said specifically that. In addition, I specifically put in the, the, the plans that are in your packet with the knowledge that they also include extensive discretionary review. I think the, the economics of Arcata are slightly different than the economics of Redwood City as well, you know, so that's something to consider as well.
Just, just one other thing. One of those plans is actually a kind of a corporate creature. The East Wisman Plan is actually Google's housing plan, where they were over a barrel, they needed to address the jobs-housing balance in Mountain View, and this plan was the result, including an area that was largely drawn from their own land, with a promise of, I can't remember how many millions of dollars of investment. So Arcata's really different, and I think we have different goals and aspirations. But even there, discretionary review was a big part of that Form-Based Code.
Commissioner Tagney?
Yeah, briefly, I enjoyed learning about this Form-Based Code and the links, and I recommend to the public that they go through the packet and find those links and watch them, it's very interesting stuff. But what it sounds to me like it entails is a very robust process of community engagement to come up with what it is we want out of this Form-Based Code, so that a lot of those decisions can be made way ahead of time. I'm kind of just speaking to the choir, I know, but trying to sort this out in my mind. And I'm a little daunted about how that process could occur, you know, and sitting through the Village, 17 meetings, that was kind of a process of community dialogue to massage that project in all kinds of different ways. And, you know, as David said, we kind of massaged it out of reality. So, how do we engage the public to get from point A to point B? And I don't need an answer on this right now, because I know it's a big topic. It's kind of the elephant in the room on Form-Based Code, I think. You know, it's just, I don't see us doing it right here in this forum. You know, there's so many things about street trees and one-way traffic and bikes, and is it one-to-three parking per unit, and just all these different things that we are kind of touching, just slightly touching, but how do those all get codified and into this Form-Based Code, you know, just seems a little daunting. Exciting, exciting, but a little daunting.
A little at times.
A little at times sounds great, too. Yep.
All right, so I'm gonna open this to the public, and I'm gonna have the people who are here come up first, and then we can take anyone who's calling. So, is any- So, is anybody here would like to come up and talk? Just state your name and...
And for those online, if you want to raise your hand, we'll answer you, we'll get to you as soon as we're done with the folks that are here in person.
And I'm going to give you three minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners, staff. My name is Daniel Bixler, I served on the Plaza Improvement Task Force as Vice Chair. I initiated the Greenview Playground Restoration Project. I was a renter here from 1988 to 2007. I owned a local business in Arcata, I'm a homeowner, I'm a mental health clinician, and I am a parent of two children that attend Arcata Public Schools. One of the fundamental reasons the Plaza Task Force was so successful in our recommendations and planning is we conducted a community-led process. Community engagement processes such as a charrette or study sessions have a long, successful history with projects in Arcata, such as the Arcata Marsh, the Creamery District, the wastewater treatment facility. Many of us are curious where the Gateway Project process deviated from a community-led insurate process, to engage in a more top-down planning process, asking for community feedback after much of the planning was outlined. In my observations, withdrawing from a community-led process for the Gateway Project Plan appears to have increased the confusion, miscommunication, community frustration, and a loss of trust in Arcata city staff by the community. I strongly request the Planning Commission and City Council call for a joint study session with the community present to consider a community-led process for Gateway Planning Project and to incorporate a charrette. Consider separating the general plan from the Gateway Project Plan, completing the general plan first. And clearly review when and why the Gateway Project Plan deviated from a specific plan to an area plan, and consider which is truly suited for future development in Arcata, for affordable housing needs, and best suited for a community-led Gateway Project Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. This is, I'm sorry, the three-minute thing is broken, so we're going to do it by hand. So, go ahead, thank you.
Hello, Chris Richards here. Don't have a lot here, but some notes. First, acknowledge, David, that in your agenda packet you specified that we need to review and revisit the plan, the details, it's been such a long process, I mean, we're at a point, it's a lot different from five years ago in the community and the conversations people are having, and I, kudos to you for bringing that up and, you know, making that declaration that we need to do some deep work here. It's good that, you know, we're cementing a group plan, a meeting that would include the council and include the Planning Commission, and I agree that, you know, the public's got to be, the part of those meetings, it's got to be continued on. We've got the support of everybody, it sounds like here are into that sort of a thing, the council has mentioned that on numerous occasions, they want to move forward, so it's just a matter of, let's get it together and move forward, I mean, it's not going to help anything being stagnant. Third point, folks are still feeling exclusion from the outreach engagement process, which is a big part of what should already have happened, and these study sessions would really only be a beginning phase for getting all of that detail stuff to work out, so that everybody can get on board. We've got, you're saying that we're carrying on, we're moving forward with land use and zoning code, you know, we're starting on the draft for the EIR. It appears that you're already moving forward without the public engagement to develop these land use codes, the, you know, this process where you want us to have this high-level code that we've pre, you know, prescribed to get all the public input into so that we can say, okay, let's let the developers have a chance at this, you know, and we all know what we're doing. I don't see that the public has been, you know, involved enough for that, even in the beginning stages, we've got a lot to work to do. I think that's about it. Kudos for everybody for the hard work you're doing, I think, let's move forward and make this happen. You've got a lot of support from the community working that you haven't had in the past engagements over the last few years, so, for whatever reasons, we've got it now, let's move forward, get some good work done, make a good code-based plan, go which direction, specific or area plan, do whatever the people want, and let's do something great that we can look forward to in the future. Anyway, thank you for my time.
Thank you.
Hello, council, I'm sorry, council, sorry, Planning Commission and Commissioner Loa, appreciate you're here to hear us. My thoughts actually are kind of reflecting a little bit of what's been talked about, but tonight's staff report is intended to provide more discussion on form-based codes and community design. Is my understanding that form-based codes will be applicable to both area and specific Sorry about that. And then, well, thank you for the fact that we're continuing this discussion on the plans and the form-based codes. I'm sorry, I had this prepared and thought out, but, okay. On January 21st and 22nd, the City of Arcata opened up, had the open house take place at the Arcata Community Center, with community members were encouraged to highlight the features of the Gateway Draft, such as building heights, designs, streetscapes, bike paths, open spaces, and amenities. Community members were there to express their approval or concerns through the use of dots and post-its. We are now pursuing mid-April, and no information has been extrapolated or presented from the open house. The process offered an early moment for people to engage, but fell short to achieve community buy-in. At what point will the committee be brought into discussion of form-based codes and the developmental aspect into the Gateway Draft? Is my understanding that form-based codes will be laced throughout the draft to initiate the streamlined development, is also my understanding that form-based codes are guided by objective design standards? For example, maximum height of buildings in the gateway shall be forty-five feet, as opposed to four stories. Building heights, sightings, setbacks, step backs should be clearly spelled out to address solar shadowing and maintain neighborhood character. Building design standards should be a product of a robust community input engagement. In addition, the discussion of open trails, open spaces, excuse me, of trails, open spaces, wetlands, and varying scale of affordable housing. The Gateway Draft is a template for future developments throughout the City of Arcata. Community members should have a right to engage in Arcata's transformation, ideally in a similar process that was guided by the general plan. And in a final note, I do support maintaining discretionary review. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, it's nice to actually see you all and be here in person. I don't quite know how to start without, you know, trying to unmute myself and saying, can you hear me? So, anyways, I will, it is really nice to have a pleasure of actually being in the room. So, I'm looking forward to there being a study session with council and the Commissioners, and I'm hoping that can come to tuition. So, I've been looking at other plans, specifically the Eureka waterfront specific plan and McKinleyville's community plan, and trying to kind of see what the differences and the similarities are. And, so, actually, there's aspects of those that I really admire. I guess I'll start with the Eureka waterfront specific plan. It's similar in acreage, it's 130 acres, gateway's 138. But they're, and they're focusing on housing and transportation and pathways, both of them are, and, so they have a lot of the similar goals. And, so, they're talking about starting at 115 housing units and starting there and focusing on that to fulfill the Reno requirements and to help with Cal Poly's housing needs. They are concentrating, so the workshop that I looked at, the viral workshop, they're concentrating specifically on the infill area with that workshop, and they broke it down into three different areas for their visioning sessions. So, that area is broken down into three different areas. So there was the commercial bayfront, the library, and the old town areas. Another thing that they did with theirs is they're doing their specific plan and working on it separate from the general plan, which I really liked, and they're adding it to the general plan after it's adopted. Eureka has an ongoing parking study, which was great, so a lot of their parking requirements are going to come from the direction of that ongoing parking study. It also addresses the homelessness issues or will be in the future, that's one of their goals. And the firm that was awarded the contract has a very clear timeline included in that contract. So, and then the McKinleyville Town Center community plan is three to four stories, okay? Their Hummel County website has a list of the comments that have been received that they put on the website for everybody to see, and they have a great 3D model of their plan. So I really feel that community needs to be the driver of this plan, of the Gateway Plan, and it needs to create a partnership with the city, the community needs to create a partnership with the city so that there's buy-in and there's trust and there's pride in what we will accomplish with this. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I think most of my comments have been already mentioned, but my name is Scott McBane, I'm a business owner and a property owner in Arcata for a long time, since late 1980s, and part-time developer, so we kind of bridge the gap on a lot of these things, so I'm also part of the responsible growth Arcata, so very supportive of smart growth, development, infill, and care deeply about the future of Arcata. I've been here since the mid-1980s, more or less, and just share a deep love for it, so very concerned about how the city's going to look in thirty years, so that's kind of my time perspective, I'm still alive by then. But we've, as you're probably aware, we've provided some lengthy input to you in your packet on page 148. And so I won't go through all those sorts of things, but one of the things that, I guess I just wanted to reemphasize is that we do support City Council and Planning Commission doing a study session so we can talk more about this. You know, we've been told earlier that this is, the Gateway Plan's a broad document with details coming in the form-based code, which is promising, but Arcata doesn't have a form-based code yet, so it's something that's new. But in the absence of describing the details in the Gateway Plan, it just leads a lot to, like, wonder what's actually going to happen. And a lot of the materials or the elements in the plan just don't make sense, it doesn't pass the giggle test, like, you know, 3,500 new units times 2.5, you know, when you start looking at some of these numbers, and then the other statement of that, you know, we can't, we're not going to do development that can't be supported by the existing infrastructure, and then you just weigh that with what the sewage treatment plant says, there's just a big logical disconnect that is really hard for the community to overcome. And so that's why we're looking for more specifics, so we can actually try to understand, like, okay, we don't have to come up with the details of the wastewater treatment plant, but at least we can articulate a plan for a plan so that we can see how the dots are connected, and that we can let go a little bit and trust the city of actually doing this right. So Patricia mentioned this earlier, but, you know, there's a big gap in the trust of where we're going with this thing, and I think that's what we're really struggling to try to get to. And we're hoping that a study session and a more of a community-based process, instead of reacting to consultants and staff documents, will help us get there, because we really want to transform our energy towards trying to contribute to solving the problem, instead of coming here and complaining about a document that's been kind of delivered to us. So we're really hoping that you can help us get there. Thank you.
How's it going? Thanks for letting us open up and listening to us, we really appreciate everything that you guys are doing. So, I'm Byron Stokum, I was raised in Arcata, I'm a business owner, my lady owns MoveWell in Arcata, and we just had a kid, so we're here to stay, this is our community. The other day I was walking around downtown in Arcata and saw, you know, you see that new building, that new four-story building, and it had this, like, this feeling of Portland a little bit. And, you know, Portland has this, like, it's kind of an infrastructural mess a little bit. And, you know, I've always heard that Arcata may become the next Santa Cruz, and that's another place that I'm kind of, you know, I don't really want to live down Santa Cruz either. But we are going to grow up here, and this project that you guys are making is a beautiful project. There's definitely a lot of, like, I see this as being a project that is going to be good for our community. But I'm wondering how fast is too fast for our community to take on? If we grow too fast, we lose our culture, we lose our community, we lose our togetherness. And I think that is something that we need to keep in mind when we're building this, and as we grow it, it needs to grow on a scale that's not too fast. We've talked about, you know, we all know that with, when you run a business, you don't want to grow up and run a business and let it grow too fast, out of control. So, you know, and so, yeah, so we want to do that mindfully. One of the things I just, recently I've been in town having this conversation about the Gateway Project, and a lot of the people I'm talking to actually are barely hearing about the Gateway Project. I, you know, I'm guessing, I think it was in 2020 was the first time that it was, it was actually said, okay, it's a go-ahead, let's start moving forward on it, from what a meeting I heard of you talking about, David. So, yeah, it was actually Super Bowl Sunday I heard about it from a couple of business owners. And they were like, yeah, Gateway Project's coming in, and I was like, what? What's going on? And this is just this last January. So, I guess my call to action is, if we can inform and maybe come into the community as much as possible, maybe go to the farmers' markets, you know, every weekend, and somehow connect with, somehow connect with the community, because a lot of people still don't know what's really going on. And so, and that is where our fear is, is that it's, and that's where our fear is, is like, we're worried that, you know, eight-story tall buildings, next thing you know, we become, we become Portland, we become a Santa Cruz. And I love those places, don't get me wrong, but it's there, I don't want to live there. And, and so, I, we just want to see this Gateway Project be beneficial for our community as we grow, and that we don't grow too fast. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you for your time. My name's Oliver Hazard, I've only been here since 2003, recently bought in 2015 in Bayside. And I too am concerned on how quickly everything was going, I just recently heard about this only a couple days ago, and saw eight-story buildings going in, and it sounds like we're getting a lot of feedback against that idea, and, you know, bringing it down to six, but I think three or four would be great. I think, you know, more is not better, and, you know, slower growth is better. And I also am concerned by bringing so many people, and our healthcare industry around here is really struggling. I have friends that are nurses, and most of what they deal with is mental health cases, where they come in almost every day, the same people, we don't have a place to bring them. A lot of that is our homeless problem, is mental health. So I think spending some time and money on mental health would be really beneficial to this community. But I think you've heard pretty much everything else, and... But I think you've heard pretty much everything else, and, you know, most profit per square foot is not the best way to go, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. So if there's no one else here, do we have people on the phone or on Zoom?
We do. Go ahead, Colin.
Evening Commissioners, this is Colin Fisk with CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. As you know, we're strong supporters of the draft plan, and we've submitted some detailed comments that, I won't go into the substance here, but since, you know, the discussion is primarily tonight about the process, I wanted to address that a little bit. First of all, I just wanted to congratulate staff on what I think has really been and continues to be one of the most extensive public processes for, you know, any planning process that I've seen locally, or anywhere else for that matter. And, you know, the number of committee and commission meetings and so forth has been pretty long, and more importantly perhaps, is the outreach that staff has been doing, you know, in the community, leading walks, going, you know, attending community meetings that I think they're calling it the "will come to you" model, and I think that that's the kind of thing that is happening and that needs to happen to ensure that the input that's received is more equitable and more reflective of the broader community and gets the input from folks that are usually harder to turn out to meetings like this. So, you know, that being the case, as important as meetings of the Planning Commission and other, you know, similar meetings are, and as critical as they are to the process, I don't think that, you know, we should try to go sort of line by line through and, you know, write, write or rewrite the plan or the implementing ordinances in this process. And I say that having spent the last, you know, two and a half years attending meetings in McKinleyville, where they've basically tried to do that in the McKinleyville Town Center ordinance, and as, as hard as they've tried and as good of a process as it's been, the result has been that, you know, folks, the broader community members who were engaged at the beginning have sort of fallen off after, meeting after meeting of, you know, sort of not getting to key decision points and getting into the weeds of things that people don't, you know, understand or maybe even care that deeply about. So I would encourage this commission to try to keep its review at a relatively high level in a way that is able to be engaged, because, you know, frankly, and maybe unfortunately, but the public can't write a zoning code. And, you know, they can provide the vision and the input, and they can provide the commentary afterward, but a zoning code is a pretty technical document. And so what I would encourage you to do is to keep this discussion at a relatively high level and to, you know, encourage staff to continue the outreach that they're doing in sort of less formal venues, so that we have that broader and more equitable public input than we would normally see on a planning basis, or even on a project-by-project basis in particular. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Colin.
Go ahead, Lee. Okay, Lee, we're going to, we're going to come back to you.
Sorry. Hi. You got me?
Okay, there you are. You'll have three minutes, Lee.
Okay. I've heard recently, you know, by reading Midre Reunion, there was an article about Stacy Selazar having to recuse herself from decision-making related to the Gateway Plan, and then talk that Alex Stillman would have to recuse herself because she owns property 500 feet from the area. And there's all this talk about, you know, ex parte between public and commissioners, and it's very specific, and we've spent so much time talking about it. And I'm just wondering about, this is really hard to say, but I've recently learned that Jennifer Dart, who's the Deputy Director of Community Development, that she's related to Chris Dart. I don't know what that relationship is. I think I heard it's, she's his sister-in-law, and he is president of DanCo, and I just wonder about that relationship, and should she have to recuse herself from decisions? Which would be kind of hard, since I think that's her job, but I just think that that's a kind of unusual situation. And I would like to also say that I think that the public should really be informed about this. People work, they don't have time to take, attend meetings like this, they don't have the inclination, and they're taking care of their children, and they're cooking and putting them to bed. So I don't know how to get people informed, but a lot of people don't know about it. And if they did know, they would be very concerned that their community is going to be changing in such a huge way. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Lee.
Hi there, welcome. And I wanted to thank you all for this discussion, and I wanted to also thank the staff for all the work they've done and their attempts to reach out to the public, which I agree with many that that's been relatively unsuccessful, because I remember very well the process we went through with the village, which although it may not have ended with what we had hoped to arrive at, there were several reasons why that, I think, happened, one of which I believe is that HSHU lost 3,000 students, and it was a problem anymore to try to fill that property. So it wasn't simply that we took so long, because it looked like it was going to be accepted, but the economics did change. I want to align myself with the comments of Dan Bixler. I submitted already two pages of comments, so, and I raised a bunch of questions and issues. But I worked with Dan Bixler on the Plaza Improvement Task Force. I really back up exactly what he was saying, and also what Scott McBane had to say. I think both of those were extremely good, and the extensive comments they presented through the Responsible Growth Group. I also want to say that after going through the charrette process and bringing together a group of 400 who routinely attended meetings, there's no reason in the world why we can't go through multiple study sessions. We don't have to just think we can solve everything in one study session. We could have working groups on various aspects of this, just like was done when we had the Plaza Improvement Task Force. Literally, individuals in the group took on various groups to contact, and we surveyed. We went out and surveyed, and we had an online survey, and we engaged the public and all that, and there's no reason we couldn't do that. I'm very much, I have no problem with Form-Based Code as long as we have discretionary oversight in some manner that is effective enough to have community engagement, and we absolutely need to have more community engagement. I don't think we've had it sufficiently. It's not that staff hasn't tried, it's just it hasn't worked that way. You have to actively go out to people multiple times, be at the plaza multiple times, and engage the community in that process as well. So I'm simply saying, I don't think if we, this is a 25-year plan with a sub-plan in it.
Jane, I'm sorry, that was three minutes.
I know, I know. Just give me one second more, okay? I don't see any reason if we, that we have to get this done in a year. If we're going to be living at this for 25 years, why don't we take a little longer? The grant fund, they do apparently can be extended.
Okay, thank you, Jane.
Thank you for listening to me.
I see no other hands.
All right, then we will close the public comment portion of this. Do we have any follow-up questions for Director Loyah?
Yeah, next steps.
Yeah, so we, I think to the Chair's point, will be bringing Gateway Plan regularly. We do also have the Local Coastal Program update that we're working on as well. We'll not have those on at the same time. So if we have the Local Coastal Program, we'll probably, you know, give the Gateway a pause here. We also are working with the consultants to build out a couple of 3D models to explore with the community, you know, what those would look like, and we're hoping to make those available in some way on, you know, on the internet, so that folks can kind of play with the models themselves and look at the, look at the models and how they intersect, and that'll give a better understanding of, you know, how some of the build-out might look as sort of a next step. We do, you know, I think there was some, you know, confusion about what the process is moving forward, and so I do want to clearly state that we are not currently working on a zoning ordinance. We're waiting until we get, you know, you know, a nod by the council, recommendations from the Planning Commission before moving forward on that, on some of these major topics like, you know, maximum building height and that sort of thing. The design process will not be a charrette process. It's very, you know, charrette process is, is a very good way to develop a small-scale project when you have a limited number of stakeholders. To try and create a charrette process with something of this scale, with the number of people that we need to engage to ensure that, you know, we've gotten, you know, the participation we need to say it's, you know, that folks have had an opportunity to weigh in, would be, you know, cost prohibitive. There's no way to have that happen in the scale and manner that we're doing this. There are a very limited number of people who would be able to come to that charrette and participate if we did it once. To the process that we've been doing with the "will come to you" meetings, where we are, you know, and maybe not everyone knows this, but we are going out into the public, we're going to meet people where they're at, we've been at the farmer's market, we're going to, you know, you know, Arts Alive, Arts Arcata rather. We've, you know, we've been going into classrooms, we've been, you know, we've held the walking tours, we're, you know, we're working with our community-based organization partners to, you know, to get to, you know, to marginalized communities that don't typically show up in these types of settings. And to try and take a charrette process to all of those different groups, you know, it just, it can't be done. But what can be done is to, you know, share the planning work that we're doing, develop tools that we can share in that way. And if the council wishes to, you know, commit, you know, project funds to go through a charrette process on top of that engagement that we're already committed to, I mean, that's certainly a policy decision. But, but I will say that there's going to be a lot more, you know, opportunity to weigh in specifically on, you know, on what the content of the plan is and the content of the Form-Based Code. And to the folks who feel like that they haven't gotten, you know, access to the decision-making process, I will extend the offer again. We will do a "will come to you" session. Sometimes we go to these, and there's really not a lot of comment on the content. There's a lot of concern expressed around the process, and I guess to those concerns, you know, I will say that, you know, my staff and I are working very diligently to ensure that we have broad participation on this plan. And, you know, there's, there's always going to be a critique, there's always going to be something we could have done better, but we are absolutely knocking it out of the park on this plan, and I refuse to accept that we are not. So, you know, to those who feel like we're not, you know, I'm extending an offer right now. I'm extending my hand to say, let's get engaged. Now is the time. You know, our contact information is on the Strategic Redevelopment Infill Plan website. You can get ahold of us, you can schedule a meeting with any of us who you feel most comfortable with, you know, that can participate with you and your group, and hear your input. We're bringing all of that input to, together in an engagement document that shares all of the engagement that we've done. And I understand those folks who want to see, you know, see that document now, they want to see the results now. We will be releasing a, you know, a draft, a preliminary, you know, sort of partway results of that soon. It is a monumental task, I will tell you. Taking all of these comments and condensing them down and summarizing them is a monumental task, and there's no one on my staff who's dedicated to that work 100% of the time. So we're trying to do careful work to bring that information forward, and we're also trying to make sure that we do it at a point in time where we've really closed out a body of that engagement. This Thursday, we're holding a bilingual Spanish-English engagement, because many people in our community don't speak English or don't feel comfortable speaking English or engaging in the topic in English. And I wouldn't feel right, we're going to be bringing the event that we held at the community center, all of that content in Spanish, so that they can engage with it in the language that they speak in their homes. And I wouldn't feel right presenting the exact same material that we're bringing to this other group, you know, when we've only done half of that engagement work. And so, you know, I would ask that the community be patient with us, and, you know, to those who feel like they can't trust, you know, staff, you know, I respect that, and I hope that at the end of this process, they can look back and say, okay, I'm convinced, we were, you know, we were maybe, you know, not in lockstep early on, but, you know, we've gone through this process together. Not that everyone is ultimately going to appreciate the end product, we're not going to have unanimity around the decisions that are made, but I think that, you know, there's no way that we can say that we didn't, you know, involve and engage everyone in the community who was able to be engaged. To the people who haven't heard about this plan, you're not hearing me right now. And, you know, I'd encourage all of you and all of the folks who are out in the community right now, that, you know, know someone, talk about this in your groups, bring it to other people's attentions, let's crowdsource this. We need your help to help spread the word on this, to get more people involved. And I would, I would, you know, double down on that. Many of the conversations, many of the "will come to you" sessions that I've been involved in have been primarily white people, primarily older people, and primarily folks who have owned property in the city of Arcata. I think that there's a natural tendency for, you know, for folks who have a property interest to be more active and engaged, they have more material resources to do that. Please reach out to, you know, folks that you know that are not white and say, hey, have you heard of this plan? Because it's really important to get the diversity of opinions. It's really important for us to get into those marginalized communities and make sure that their voices are heard in this process too. So, you know, with that, I'd say, look, Google SERP, S-I-R-P, and get ahold of us.
Any further, okay, go ahead.
I was just hoping that you could say the date and time for the Spanish-speaking.
Yeah, thank you. I was going to do that, the communications, but we're holding the bilingual meeting on the Gateway Area Plan at the community center, at the Courtyards Apartments, at 5:30 on this Thursday. And so that's been broadcast and advertised out there in various means, sharing it with you now. If you'd like to come, please do.
Does anyone else have any?
I was just wondering, what are we doing to reach out to the students? I'm curious, because we want to bring in all the voices.
Yeah, we've done multiple engagements at the student level, reaching out to the, you know, various groups, the associated students. We've done, you know, we've spoken in classrooms, we've held "will come to you" sessions with Shante Cat, with a group of students that she pulled together, and we'll continue to do that. You know, we're getting ready to go into the summer, and it's important. You know, we're getting ready to go into the summer, and it's important for them to be engaged as well. You know, the students are impacted by housing as much or more than, than many folks because they're, you know, oftentimes on a rotating schedule, so they have to deal with it multiple times throughout their tenure here in our community.
So, over the weeks to come, if people in the community would like to contribute ideas towards this design of this development project, you know, is that through letters? Is that by showing up to the joint study session, which, I mean, this room only holds so many people, and even less when all the tables are in the middle here? So what are the other avenues for people to, is there an online survey still? Letters, if it's, if it's only going to be a business item for some of these meetings, then letters won't be in our packet if they've submitted them, they'll be held up until it's an agendized action item, I assume. So, I don't know, what, how, help me out here, what's the process? What's the public? How, how do they get engaged still?
Yeah, great question. I think for right now, you know, first off, I want to, you know, come back, at your next meeting, I want to come back to this idea of, you know, how the Planning Commission wants the public to have access to each of you individually. For the time being, until we make a formal decision on that, staff will continue to forward emails that are clearly addressed to the Planning Commission, to the Planning Commission when we receive them. We will collate those and combine them into a packet that we'll bring when we have an agenda item on the Gateway Area, which will be very regularly over the next several months, and so, you know, or the general plan, whatever the, whatever the topic is, we'll continue to bring those collated documents to you. For folks who, you know, don't trust the process right now, don't feel comfortable giving staff, you know, the, the content to convey, please feel free, the City Council email addresses are on the website, they can email the City Council members directly. But, you know, I, you know, I hope that, you know, over the course of the next several months that we can continue to build that trust. What I'm hearing from my perspective, and I understand, you know, you know, trust is a relationship thing, there's, it takes two to engage in that, I'm hearing a lot of misunderstanding that results in that trust, and I think if we continue to have the conversation, if folks that are, you know, concerned right now, reach out in a way that feels safe to them, that we can continue to build that trust. And so, part of that building trust is, we commit to sending you all emails that we receive immediately, recognizing that was their expectation all along, not thinking about how the impact of our, our standard operating procedure impacted that, that trust level.
Could I ask another quick question? It's quick, I promise. I guess my question is, while I appreciate the Will Come to You, if you're not even aware of the Gateway Plan, how do you ask that because you're not aware of it? So I'm just, it's kind of a conundrum. Right, I don't know. I mean, we, we do need to reach those people, though, because if they don't know, to ask, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does. You know, it's really difficult to prove a negative. We are relying on, you know, networks of people, we're all, we all know someone, and so we're relying on networks of people. We try and, you know, connect with folks that are well-connected within communities and offer a Will Come to You session to them. And, and if there's a group out there, I've been, I've been asked by, you know, 10 different groups over the last couple of months, hey, will you come talk to us? If you can pull together, you know, 10, 15 people, you know, we would love to come and talk to them. That could be your neighbors, it could be your church group, it could be your Rotary, it could be your, you know, community-based organization, it could be the, the healthcare system you work in, it could be whatever your network is, we'll come to them and start having the conversation. I understand what it feels like to feel like, hey, I didn't know about this earlier, you didn't do a good job of reaching out because I didn't know about this earlier. There's 18,000, close to 19,000 residents in the city of Arcata, they are definitely, I guarantee you, not all plugged into the city of Arcata's social media, or, you know, the city of Arcata's, you know, legal notices, they're not reading for those. And there's going to be a vast majority of people who are, whose lives will be directly impacted by this plan, who just couldn't care less, that's not their shtick. But for the rest of the people, you know, we want to get to them, and we want them to at least know what's going on. Writing comments either, either by email or, or, you know, sending in, you know, handwritten letters, those kinds of things are really impactful, because in your words, show up in the public record on this. You know, but, but having those, those conversations at the Will Come to You sessions are a really great way to start to learn about what's going on, and to the extent that you know what's going on, providing us feedback in those forums that we can then bring back and share with the decision-makers.
Yeah, this, this is a bit of a timing question also, and, and it comes up because the city has engaged consultants to do an environmental impact assessment, an EIR, on both the Gateway Plan and the general plan of which it's intended to be a part, assuming that it will remain an area plan rather than turning to something else. What are we doing in the next six months to address the big issues of the broader general plan above and beyond the Gateway Plan? And how can the public also have some input in the environmental impact assessment of both of those levels of planning? I know that the scoping session you had announced for the EIR has closed, and yet there was limited public input to that, but it's a much bigger project. So maybe you could say a little bit about the, the bigger context of the general plan, and that would really help us.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for, for that reminder. You and I had corresponded a little bit offline about this as well. And the, the environmental review is kind of esoteric to many people, but any comments that folks make that speak to the environmental review, we'll be incorporating into, you know, sort of the, the running list of comments on the general plan and the Gateway Plan as well. So that's just sort of a general, you know, theme, how we'll be operating. Right now, we're working with our consultants to update the general plan, and again, the most of the general plan is still very relevant, we believe. We've done, you know, some community visioning, we're hearing similar concepts come back. You know, our general plan was adopted in 2000, there are some areas where we need to update policy, but we're not anticipating major changes to large parts of that. So we're working through those draft updates now. We, as a matter of fact, many of the folks who, you know, worked on that general plan are still in the community, involved and engaged, some of them here today. And so, you know, so we'll pull those, those edits together as drafts and then start having, you know, having engagements on those, you know, likely starting at the Planning Commission just to see where we're at. And I think it's very relevant to, you know, at any time throughout this process, whether we're bringing the Gateway Area Plan or, you know, these draft documents together to ensure that we've got, you know, a solid project description that we can, you know, base our EIR on. You know, to start addressing those, those environmental concerns, and so, you know, to the extent that we're, you know, under circulation, obviously, any written comments on that, EIR will be incorporated and addressed in the EIR. But, you know, I really view, you know, you know, you know, this as a time to, you know, problem-solve in advance, to be able to identify any concerns that are coming up along the way, and make sure that we're, you know, addressing these in the planning documents. So that's what's going to happen over the six months relative to that. What I'm hoping is that over the course of the next two months, three months, we'll have draft revised chapters to start looking at. That'll form the basis of the, the description that the EIR will be based on. And then anything we ramp down relative to that, you know, if we scale back and, you know, for instance, the, the Gateway Area Plan doesn't have eight-story buildings, it has three, as some people are saying they want, instead of, you know, some, some middle ground, the EIR will have evaluated eight, and so any step down from that, the EIR will be valid for even still. So, so that's kind of the process we'll be going through over the next six months is taking a look at the drafts, looking at the, you know, starting the circulation on the EIR, and then, you know, getting into any revisions that the public process highlights.
So if there's nothing else, we can move on to correspondence and/or communications.
Yeah, for, for my part, the main thing I just wanted to highlight was the, the upcoming event, the bilingual event, so I've talked about that Thursday, 5:30 at the Courtyards Apartments Community Room, and so that's, that's the main thing on my docket.
And everybody's invited to that, you don't need a handwritten invitation, if you're hearing this, you're invited, right? Right, okay. Any other correspondence or communications?
Yeah, I should ask this question. What's the latest in the day? I just heard 5:30 on that event, but I imagine staff doesn't generally want to do evening events. Is that true, or on the Will Come to You about the Gateway?
You know, I probably shouldn't advertise this. So I did a, I did a Will Come to You on Sunday at 1:00. You know, this is, you know, important to get to people where they're at, and so we're, you know, we're putting in the extra effort, you know, to do that. And so if you have a group and the only time you can meet is at night, we're, we're going to find a way to get to you. Thank you.
A few months ago, we started talking about a legal briefing about the city's regulatory and planning authority over property off-campus that the university and its affiliated organizations own or would develop, even if someone else owns the property. Do we have some kind of a target for when we can expect that briefing?
Yeah, my hope is that I can bring something to the next or the very next meeting. I've, and I'm also coordinating with Michael Fisher, who's a VP at Cal Poly, excuse me, for, for operations and is involved in the, you know, the planning, the, the physical infrastructure planning for the, the university. And so I'm having, he's, he's offered to come and speak to the Planning Commission as well, so we're going to coordinate that so that we have, you know, both those topics on as sort of a combo presentation, and he can also speak to, you know, how, from the university's perspective, how those, you know, the relationship between land use planning and university build-out.
Okay, and, and will we have the city's legal counsel here if we have questions to ask?
The, you know, I don't want to commit to that at this point. At this point, there, I think that, you know, you know, I've discussed it with the city attorney, and we both feel that, you know, I can provide a robust enough staff report to address the concerns and comments. Yeah.
Any other? If not, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.